Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask if Councilman Larry McAteer would like to lead us in the invocation, and then if Councilman Pat Ryan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask everyone to stand for both.
Our Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us, for the challenge that has related our meeting today. We pray that as we get together, we might be of one accord, that we would look for those items and those plans and those principles that would honor you. We pray for our mayor. We thank you for his diligence, for his determination, for his dedication to lead us forward. And may we, as a council, just come together and look to you for the source of wisdom as we evaluate the proposals that are before us. Thank you for the way you've blessed us in the past and the way you'll continue to bless us as we obey your principles. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As I think the council is aware, we have a few items of business here, and then budget reports. I guess my preference would be, if there's not going to be extensive debate on any of the five items that require a separate vote, I'd like to go ahead and move those up because we have some people from the general public who have come here to be a part of that and answer any questions if there are any. And I'd rather they not have to sit through our budget explanation if that's not necessary. Does anyone expect any sort of considerable debate on any of the five items that we need to vote on separately? Okay. Then, that being the case, why don't we move up item 5, A, B, C, D, E, and F? And we'll have to vote on these separately. And we'll call the council meeting to order, and I'll ask for a motion on item 5. All of these items have been heard before the council...
5A.
Yeah, 5A. I'm sorry, did I not mention that? Item 5A. All of these items have been heard before the council. We've actually had a presentation on this one, but 5A is the definition of the bike routes. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Just a quick question, Your Honor.
I'm sure.
I was a little confused on the wording here, and maybe it's just my own mind, and if I can be straightened out. On the right of a bicyclist, he uses the entire lane of traffic. You know, it specifically says adjacent to bicycle routes are designated by how they can do it. But what if it's not a designated bicycle route? Do they have to stay as close to the curb as possible? And I was a little bit confused as to what that provided for.
Dennis, can you answer that? Dennis is working. We've had a myriad, a large group of folks, attorneys and planners and public works directors and so forth.
Councilman, yes, I believe that the ability or the right of the bicyclist to use the full lane only applies to those routes designated as bike routes.
Okay.
Randy Entz with Planning Department is here. Is that an accurate statement?
Okay, good, thanks. And the other comment I'd like to make is that I think this is a good ordinance, but if we could encourage the State Highway Department to do more in their handbook about bicyclists in sharing the road and common sense courtesy...
I think we're preparing a letter to the Director of Public Safety for your signature to encourage that.
Okay, for my signature, okay.
Well, you're the one that requested it last week, and we are following up on that, sir.
We're staying out of that one.
I feel honored, yes. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
All right. With that, I think we're ready to vote on 5A.
I have one question. Do we know how many designated bike routes that has been identified in the city now?
I believe there's around 220 miles.
All right. Let's vote on item 5A. Passed unanimously. Item 5B involving the rules that impounded vehicles, and it brings us in accordance to state law. Comments or questions on 5B? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 5C deals with the driving patterns on Hefner Road. Time of day, some further explanation for the police department. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item D deals with how we deal with protest calculations. Comments or questions on that? All right. Cast your votes. 5D passes. That brings us to 5E. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. Jim, Kenny, you want to kind of get a start on this?
Councilor, Dan Bromer, whichever would be appropriate to summarize the...
Yes, we've had ongoing negotiations with the parties on this, and I think the issues with respect to item E, the revocable permit for Kathy's closet have been resolved. And unless there's somebody here that is, has a problem with it, I think it's appropriate to strike that item at this time.
Dan, after the council meeting last week, there was a applicant that came forth and had some concerns about access.
Yes. The applicant has agreed to provide access and has, in fact, given parking or access passes to those people whose property is obstructed.
So that came to news to us after the meeting last week. So what we're asking council to do is rescind last week's action
That's correct.
regarding that permit and to modify it to accommodate that issue.
That's correct.
And that rescension is on item 5E1. Any comments or questions from council? We have some people that have signed up to speak. Y'all would like to speak on this item? Or would you like to wait until the next item?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what the...
Well, come on forward then. And we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Ray Vincent, 430 Northwest 11th. Here on behalf of Kathy's Market on Paseo. Now, the issue is right here on 28th Street at Dewey. That's one way south. But Kathy's, you know, agreed to give, that people come up here in these apartments and that business right there and come in there and have access. It has already kind of been passes up and everything so that they would have access there. And the only thing that she wants is also to not to be barricaded off right here at Dewey and 28th, and also right here at Dewey and Paseo, and then right here at Dewey and 28th. I think we've resolved everything. I'm hoping that what your intention is, is to modify her permit so that these folks have access there.
Ms. Vincent, that's really the next item. That's the item for the Paseo Arts Association.
So can I ask, so is somebody going to be manning the barricade to let the people with passes go in and out?
Yes, yes, Mr. Vincent. There will be someone right here that would, they want access, the liberty pass, they got a pass. They can go up there and have access. And I think there's 130 passes or something like that that people want to have, which hopefully they all wouldn't want to try to get to these 13 parking space right here. But however many they think they need, we'll provide them to so that they can have that access.
When you say grant the individuals passes, are we talking about a physical piece of, a document?
Yes. Little, excuse me, a little pink pass that says access on Dewey so they can get access from, I think it's 28th, up to the apartments and to the office building on 27th and Paseo.
Where will they get the access pass from?
At the intersection of Dewey and 28th. There's going to be a barricade there for, generally for just public access. But in order to get access to the north, there's a large apartment complex, then there's an office building up on 27th and Paseo. And it's to allow the residents of those apartments and the people that are in that office building to have access on Dewey while the festival's going on.
What type of credentials would an individual have to have to say that they are entitled to an access pass?
They've got, they've been, access passes have been distributed. They will have the access pass in their hand when they come up to that barricade. And if they show that access pass, they'll be allowed to go up Dewey.
So you're saying that these passes will be previously distributed to everyone that live in the apartment complex?
They've already been distributed.
Okay. And I think it might be more appropriate to have a motion to strike item E1 and 2, and then we'll be fixing it with 5F. Is that right, Francis?
That's correct, Your Honor. If the desire is to leave the revocable permit in place for Kathy's Market on Paseo, then item E1 and 2 should be stripped.
Okay. So Gary, you want to make your motion to strike item E1?
Well, the previous action was approval last week, and this was put on the agenda in case the apartment complex situation was not resolved. But evidently, it has been resolved.
Kathy's agreed to modify her application
Yes, yes.
to take care of the permit situation. So... Yes, so council needs to take no action on E, and she's modifying her revocable permit application that will take care of...
That would actually be E1 and 2.
Right, E1 and 2.
It doesn't really modify her application. She has just agreed to grant these access passes, like I said, to the apartment owners and, or apartment tenants and the office people.
All right. Cast your votes on striking E1. Passed unanimously. How about a motion out of striking E2?
Move item striking E2.
Second. All right. Cast your votes. Item is struck. Now we get on to item 5F.
How do you strike something? Who's granting the permit?
We have some people that have signed up to speak. Karen Orr, you want to come forward? Good morning, Karen. We wanted your name and address for the record.
Karen Orr. I'm president of the Paseo Arts Association. I live at 5112 Brook Hollow Drive, Oklahoma City.
It appears the council is ready to go on item 5F. Are you okay with that? Or do you want to speak in one way or the other?
Last night, we agreed to move part of our barricades on Dewey and 28th, and I'm okay with that. What I just want the council to understand is that even, you're going to have a lot of traffic going up and down Dewey, back and forth to those apartments. And there's vendors on both sides there, and there's going to be a lot of pedestrians.
Okay.
I'm concerned that something will happen. And if something happens, it's going to be the Paseo Arts Festival. That's my only concern. I just wanted it on the record.
Okay. Are you okay with item 5F?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Vincent, are you okay with where we are on 5F as well?
Yes, Mayor. We would urge you to approve their permit.
Okay. And are you speaking for Ted, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Betty Smith?
I'm Betty Smith.
Good morning, Betty. Would you pull the microphone down a little bit in front of you then? Thank you.
Yes. I'm just here to be sure that Dewey is open on the east side from 30th to past our driveway, as shown on the map. Exhibit A and B amended. That's my only reason for being here.
I think the answer is yes. Dan?
That's correct.
Sounds like you're good to go, Betty. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank the council.
Thanks for coming down. Anybody else want to speak on this item before we vote on item 5F? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you all. Okay. We'll recess the council meeting, move into item 1. This is the presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2011-2012 budgets. Jim?
Mayor, following up on our budget, our finance committee from two weeks ago, we have three budget presentations this morning. And the first, then, will be presented by Dennis Clower as our public works director.
Excuse me. Good morning, Mayor and council, Mr. City Manager. I'm pleased to be here to present the budget for fiscal year 2012 for the Public Works Department. That section can be found beginning on page 377 of your book. The mission of the Public Works Department is to provide infrastructure construction and maintenance, private construction review and inspection, and emergency first response services to the public so they can live, work, and play in a safe and functional environment. Our proposed budget of just under $41 million is about 4.2% above fiscal year 2011. As you can see, we have a net addition of two positions. The general fund portion of our budget is about 63%. And the drainage utility fund portion of our budget is about 37%. This next slide shows the budget in a pie chart form. As you can see, street and drainage maintenance is by far the biggest division in our department at 45% of our budget and about 55% of our personnel, followed by administration and engineering at 16%, field services at 9%, stormwater quality at 8%, and Oklahoma River and traffic management at 3% each. The engineering line of business has three programs. The project management program provides for the administration of our geo-bond program, as well as our non-bond CIP program. Our support program provides for administration of our A and E contracts and other annual contracts, and also provides for right-of-way acquisition for bond projects. Our technical review program provides for plan review for both public and private developments. One of our strategic results falls in this area. By the end of 2012, all approved projects from the '95 and '2000 bond authorizations will be completed. All '95 projects have been completed. Of the remaining projects from the '2000 authorization, 17 are currently under construction. The remaining 10 are in design, and six of those will be awarded before the end of this fiscal year, and the remaining four will be awarded shortly after, or in the beginning part of the next fiscal year. Our target for delivery of bond program, of our bond program, remains at about $78 million per year. These are a couple of photos of two recently completed bond projects. The one on the upper right is a street widening project. The one on the lower left is a drainage project. And these are examples of two bond projects that are currently under construction. In the upper left is the rehabilitation of the Route 66 Bridge over the North Canadian River, just north of Lake Obelhouser. And the bottom right is an area that we're getting ready to start construction on to improve drainage facilities around 112th and Miller. Field services line of business has two programs. The construction inspection and quality control program provides for daily infrastructure inspection of all of our construction projects. It also provides contract management for our utility cut program. The survey program provides for boundary surveys. It provides for surveys for other departments, and it provides depth surveys on the Oklahoma River. Another of our strategic results in this area is to complete 80% of the utility cuts within 30 calendar days or less of receipt from line maintenance. We normally address over 1,000 utility cut repairs per year. As you can see, our estimate for this year is at 60%, which is still below our target of 80. We are currently at 43 days, and we fell behind in January or February due to the severe winter weather we had in those two months. We expect to catch up and be at 80% within about a month or so. These are examples of, on the lower left, a recently completed utility cut repair, and on the upper right, a utility cut repair that's under construction. The Oklahoma River corridor line of business has two programs. The dams and skater system program provides preventive and annual maintenance of the dams, locks, and the skater system. And our river maintenance program provides for maintenance, obviously, of the river is performed by our street and drainage maintenance division. We have a fleet of four boats that are used to perform maintenance on the locks, dams, and to provide debris removal. This photograph is of some work ongoing earlier this year at the Brom Dam located around Western Avenue. You can see on the upstream side of the dam is a new piece of equipment that we have called a hydromate vessel. It was purchased with 2007 drainage bond funds and is equipped with various pieces of equipment, such as a crane, a clamshell, and a bucket, which gives us a lot of versatility in being able to perform maintenance on the river. These next two photos are also of two fairly new pieces of equipment. The upper right is a skimmer, which, as you can see, is collecting debris from the river. This was also purchased with 2007 drainage bond funds. The photo on the lower left is a new maintenance barge which is purchased with drainage utility funds. The total amount of debris removed from the river this fiscal year will be around 120 tons. These photos show a river maintenance facility that is currently under construction near Exchange Avenue, near the Kappa facility. In the upper right, you can see the Kappa docks, which will accommodate the three river cruisers. You can see one of those moored there in this photo. And then, on the photo on the lower left, you can see space for the public works, the four public works maintenance vessels. Having these vessels moored here will greatly alleviate the need to transport our boats on trailers and will allow for better response time. The facility will be completed this summer. The stormwater quality line of business has three programs. Permitting public and public outreach provides for construction and industrial inspections, and also provides an annual report to the YODQ. Our environmental water quality program provides for watershed characterization and testing, and also provides pollution investigations. Our household hazardous waste facility located at Southwest 15th and Portland is open from Tuesday through Friday from 9:30 to 6:00 p.m. and Saturday from 8:30 to 11:30. There are also two collections per year at the fairgrounds. We held one of those last month. The photo on the left indicates one of our 26 debris barriers that are located on the river. We have one of these at every tributary or creek that discharges into the river. As you can see, it's very useful at collecting debris before it enters the river. The photo on the right is a spool that will wind these barriers onto it, which will make it much easier for us to remove those barriers when they need to be removed. The cost for this spool is included in the current budget. It's estimated that stormwater quality collects over 6,000 pounds of fallible debris each year. These photos are from our household hazardous waste program. The one on the left indicates the paint disposal activity that's going on daily. And the photo on the right is one of our paint can crushers. We currently have two. One of those is very old, and we have a replacement for it in this current year's budget. So we'll still have two in use after the budget is approved. Our streets, traffic, and drainage maintenance line of business has four programs. The streets program provides pothole patching, base repairs, our micro resurfacing program, and rural road maintenance. Traffic operations program provides for signal repair, sign fabrication, and sign repair and installation. The drainage program provides for maintenance on the Oklahoma River, provides for rural road drainage maintenance, inlet and storm sewer cleaning, and concrete structure repairs. Our graffiti removal program provides for removal of graffiti on public property and removal of graffiti on private property after notification from the Development Services Department. Last fiscal year, we had about 2,800 requests for graffiti removal. Through April 30th of this year, we've had about 2,300 requests. These normally break down to 2/3 on private property and 1/3 on public property. Another strategic result in this line of business, by 2011, 50% of the citizens will rate the condition of city streets as satisfactory or above. As you can see, last fiscal year, the actual number from our citizen survey was 23%. Due to work that we performed on our streets, both maintenance-wise and through our bond program, we expect to see an increase in this number when the next citizen survey is done. And it's evidenced by the estimate for this year at 34%. Another strategic result from this line of business, complete 80% of pothole repairs within three working days of the complaint. We normally repair around 12,000 potholes per year. Winter weather and severe storms in the spring and summer normally put us behind on our patching. As you can see, last year, we were at 71%, and we expect to be at 65% at year's end. But our target is still at 80%. These are a couple of photographs of our crews at work. The one on the upper left is a pothole patching program. We have 12 two-man crews. And in the base repair program on the bottom right, we have two five-man crews that work on these types of issues. These photos give evidence of our micro resurfacing program, which we do on arterial streets. The one on the upper left is an actual crew performing work. And the one on the lower right shows the difference in a street that's been recently micro resurfaced and the one to the right that has not. The program is active from May through October, and is totally reliant on warm weather. Our target each year is 100 lane miles of arterial streets. In fiscal year 2008, we performed micro resurfacing on 107 lane miles. In 2009, we began having some issues with our oil that we got from our vendor. You may remember that. That year, we only did 43 lane miles, and we only did 20 in fiscal year 2010 because we still hadn't resolved the issues with the oil and because of severe storms in the spring of 2010, the tornadoes and the flooding. We had to take those workers that work on those micro crews and put them on performing cleanup and repairs from the storms. However, we've done 40 lane miles this fiscal year to date, and we fully expect to complete 100 lane miles this calendar year. We have four crews and four trucks that perform this service. Traffic management line of business has three programs. Traffic engineering provides plan reviews, traffic impact studies, signal phasing, and timing reviews. Our data collection program provides for average daily traffic counts, speed studies, turning movement counts. And our traffic and transportation services program provides for administration of our wrecker service contracts, support to the Traffic and Transportation Commission, and issues activity permits and manages and issues work zone permits. Speaking of work zone permits, work zone safety is of prime importance. We strive to protect the workers, the drivers, and the pedestrians. With the onset of Project 180 this past year, it has really decreased our ability of our staff to provide adequate monitoring of our work zones. The proposed budget includes a new position to assist in work zone monitoring just in the downtown area. There were about 1,440 work zone permits issued in fiscal year 2010, and we expect to see that number far exceeded this fiscal year. Major budget changes in the general fund. The first change shown on this slide is for the work zone monitoring that I just mentioned for Project 180. The second change is for two project managers for the MAPS office, two project managed MAPS, three projects. There are currently six project managers in the MAPS office. All of these are funded by the Public Works Department. The third change shown is for additional asphalt materials for street maintenance. These materials were previously funded by the Street and Alley Fund. Major drainage, major changes in the drainage utility fund. The first change shown on this slide is to provide riprep along the river and for maintenance of our boats and fuel for our boats. And the second change shown is to replace a worn-out hydraulic excavator that is used in the rural road drainage program. That completes my presentation. I'll be happy to respond to questions.
Your Honor, Dennis, first of all, a compliment. When I first got on the council, I seemed like I had a continual stream of complaints about utility cut repairs. And I just don't have those anymore. And I want to thank you all for the new program you've put in place and how effective it's been. I appreciate that. I do have a question, though. Want to comment you made just a second ago about the major budget changes. The addition of two engineers for MAPS 3 project support, and then the six engineers or coordinators or managers, whatever you have now, being a general fund expense. Are you, is the general fund reimbursed by MAPS money for those positions?
Yes.
So why is it showing up in the general fund? Why don't we?
Because it's a general fund position within his department. It will be reimbursed through a chargeback.
Okay. So the net impact on a general fund is going to be zero of these changes?
That's correct.
Okay.
And to follow up with that, it's the same as our geo-bond program. All of those project managers are in our budget, but they're...
Paid for by the geo-bond money.
Paid for by the bond program.
So what percentage roughly of your budget is paid for from other sources?
Craig, you might be better to...
That's okay.
We'll go back to you, Mr. Ryan, on that. We can give you the penny as what's being charged back on both...
Penny's probably too much detail, but anything's a dollar.
No, no, we have it on both the GO and the MAPS reimbursement.
I manage their own, sir.
That's all right. Lower than Meg.
Yeah, Dennis, a quick question. On the micro resurfacing, that is what I refer to as shooting chip, is that correct?
No, sir. The chip seal that you refer to is done in our rural, on our rural roadways. The micro resurfacing is done on arterial streets, more in the urban areas. And it's a, it's a, it's not a substitute for a mill and overlay. If we catch a street that has not deteriorated past a certain point through our pavement management program, we can micro resurface it and extend the life from five to 10 years, and it's about 15% of the cost of a full-depth mill and overlay. The chip seal is a different program that's done on rural roads.
So the miles we're talking about, like the 100 miles, is not the shooting chip miles?
No, sir. We try, I think our target on chip seal is 40 lane miles a year.
Okay, now, last year we did a pretty good job and we still had some left over. Is it safe to assume that those items that didn't get done last year will get done this year, weather permitting, as we go forward?
That is our intent, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Meg?
Just a quick one for the manager, really, going back to Councilman Ryan's question. In our budget overall, those funds that we reimburse you were shown up as transfers? Craig, is that...
Yes.
Were they? Okay, great. Thank you.
Comment your questions for Dennis. Yeah, Pat?
Your Honor, I just have a question. Dennis, I think you've got a great program on the arterial streets. We're making real progress there. But I've got some neighborhoods where they feel their streets, interior streets, have deteriorated to the point where they need work done on. Is there money in your budget for the upcoming year to address any of those problems?
That is only done through, currently through the general obligation bond program. You might recall that the 2000 authorization was the first bond authorization to include resurfacing on residential streets. So the issues that you're talking about are not issues that are just now occurring. They've accumulated over many years. And we put even more money into the 2007 authorization for residential streets. But no, we don't have a program to resurface residential streets in our budget.
To resurface, but if we have issues where we've got, you know, potholes and bad areas, we do go in on a routine basis and...
We've got, we've gone beyond potholes in several of these areas. We've got actual some base failures, and we're not able to address those under our current budget.
No, we do address those on an isolated basis. We say if it's a concrete street and we've got a very bad panel or two of concrete, we've got a program to go in and replace those concrete panels or to address base failures if it's an asphalt street.
Have you got any money in your budget yet for preventive maintenance, crack sealing kind of thing? We did, used to do several years ago.
We do, we do crack sealing in the winter in advance of our micro resurfacing. And those are the same crews that do that in the winter do the micro resurfacing in the summer.
There's no general program to look at all our streets? It has to be in conjunction with another project?
Well, no, we, the micro resurfacing that we do is, as I described, we go in and crack seal those streets in the winter. I'm not sure I'm answering your question properly.
Well, I understand that. You do crack sealing in conjunction with a micro, with another project, another effort.
Right.
But there's no, there's no preventive maintenance program in place to address crack sealing on a general overall basis?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Skip?
Dennis, do your department have a plan, is it to address issues of major drainage problems that exist in certain parts of the city that has been identified, you know, over the years that have not really been corrected based on major drainage infrastructure?
Yes, we, when we put the 2007 bond authorization together, the drainage portion of it was relatively small. I think it's about 35 million compared to the 755 million total, so it was a very small part of that. That was due to the fact that we believed that we had most of our major drainage issues resolved. We found that when you get a 500-year frequency storm that we don't, you can't design for those sorts of storms, if you're referring to like the weather we had last year. But we take complaints all the time about, and categorize them into different categories of low, medium, and high priority. The high priorities are those that, where we have a home or a business that has flooded, that we have evidence of that. We log those complaints in and we keep track of those so that the next time we put a bond program together, if we have not addressed, don't have plans to address those areas, we will put it in the next bond issue. Some of the areas you're talking about, I think we still have money in the bond program to address those. We have not put out a lot of drainage work out of the 2007 authorization yet, but we still have some large projects yet to do out of that authorization.
But we also have constant maintenance issues with our drainage system. People dump trash and debris in the drainage ways that, you know, they get washed down and clog up an inlet downstream during a storm or other things, that construction activity that might clog an inlet. And so we're also diligent to monitor those type of situations that come forth.
Well, I would just like to bring out a point. Last Friday, we had some very heavy rain, I guess started Thursday night, at 10th and Grand Boulevard, Edwards Elementary School. I went over to the school after I received a call saying that the school had flooded. There was three inches of water that was in the school. The whole brand-new wing of the school was flooded. Then I find out that this is the third time that the school has flooded, prior to the renovations of the school under the MAPS III, and twice since they opened the school up. And there is a, there's a drainage to the west of the school, and it's obvious that there is an underground drainage and then the water that's coming off the surface. The land is so flat that all this water just runs right into the school. And, you know, the reason why I ask that question is, is that this is an area that I know when we had the big rain two years ago that it was flooded along with other parts of the city. But the rain that we had last Friday, I don't think was enough that if the drainage was proper there, that this school would not be flooded. And I just think it's something that we need to put on a priority list because if you're going to flood the school, I mean, if it's, the children there were absolutely displaced for almost a half of a day from their school activities because, you know, everything was shut down because of the water.
I'm aware of that issue. I think we've got some maintenance issues out there. I spoke with Mike Di Giacomo yesterday, and he has identified some maintenance issues that need to be addressed, and they're going to take care of that. But yes, we've already placed that location on a list to be addressed.
Well, I would hope that it gets placed on a priority list because, you know, the spend, the amount of money that we spent on the school under the MAPS and then not to be able to get the full use out of it because every time it rains, the school gets flooded. You know, and I think a lot of people need to be brought to the table to address this issue because somebody in the architectural design and in the planning stage of this project obviously didn't do the right work as it relates to the terrain that's there. And they were well aware of the fact that this drainage on the west side of the school has been there for over 50 years. And the golf course floods, everybody's been knowing the fact that the golf course floods. And now this water has just flowed over to, since we put the Katy Trails in, I think that it has enhanced it. The debris and the trees have not been cleaned, cleaned out from the drainage area, and this water is just backing up every time it rains. And I just think this is an injustice to the students, it's an injustice to the citizens there, that if this is not placed on the priority list, then I don't think we'd be unfair to citizens that live in the northeast quadrant of Oklahoma City. And Dennis, I'm not pointing you as the lead person, but I think that when this contract was given to the contractor to develop this project, that somebody should have had more information in reference to the terrain that exists there. You know, a blind person could clearly see that if you go in there and you don't elevate the land, if you were going to rebuild a school on, it's going to flood. It was flooding before, and the more they kept digging and the more they kept moving dirt, the worse it got. And I just hope that this gets placed on a priority list because the school is going to be back in session, I believe, the 28th of June. They're going to do the 11-month program. And if they're going to have to be subjected to every time it rains over that area, that the kids want to be displaced and the school activities is going to be terminated, I just don't think it's just.
Constable Kelly, we'd be happy to address that, and we'll give you a full report on it. Obviously, last year's rainfall, or two years ago, was a very, very significant historic rainfall event. This year's, there was a plugged inlet and some maintenance issues out there. And I don't know, and I can't tell you today whether it's a maintenance issue or whether we need to do some actual infrastructure improvements out there, but we will find out and get back to you on that, on that item.
Hey, there are comments of questions for Dennis on his budget proposal? All right, Dennis, thank you.
Thank you all.
Jim?
Bob Teener's going to come next and talk to us about Development Services.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce my staff. I brought the division heads here, just so you see some of them every Tuesday. Rick Wickenkamp is my Assistant Director. Charles Locke, Code Enforcement, he's here every Tuesday. J.J. Chambliss, he does zoning subdivision. David Adcock, he is our Development Center Manager. He does building permits. Catherine English is Animal Welfare. And then Carol Reed's Management Specialist, she helped put this all together. And then Rich Wall here is going to bail me out if I mess something up on the slides, so. Development Services is on page 135 of the budget book. Our mission statements there, basically our focus is on public safety, customer service, and improving quality of life. We've identified five core issues for the department. Basically, our core services, we do animal welfare, code enforcement, building permits, and development review process. One thing that we've identified, and you'll see throughout my presentation, is that we rely more and more on technology to help us do our job. Code enforcement priorities, through the first half of this year, we've had an increase of over 18% on our complaints. And so we have the same, basically the same number of inspectors, so we're trying to do some things to improve that, and I'll talk about that later in the presentation. Live exit community, this talks about our attempt to get to 75% live exit rate in the shelter. We're doing some things to improve that. A development review, that's the review of the application process for zoning and subdivision. One thing that happens there is, as these applications get more complex, we use a plan unit development that you see that involves a lot of negotiation. There's traffic studies that we're looking at now. There's interaction with public works about drainage. All those things need coordination, and so we're trying to use technology to help us do that. The last one's the development process, that's the building permits. That's inspections and actually issuing the permits. This first strategic result, this shows our response time for priorities in animal welfare. In October of last year, we implemented our computer-aided dispatch system, so all our officers in the field have, are linked to our shelter and can respond based on the calls that we get. One thing that we found out is that our numbers, starting in October, really, we had to ask IT for some clarification and we had to work through them. Our supervisors kind of had to learn how to use the system and work with our officers. Really, the first good data that we have are March and April, where we've, 72% of the time on Priority One calls, we're there within two hours. We'll probably, as this evolves and we get more numbers, we'll probably look at those priorities and those percentages to see what the most accurate, I mean, this is, we had these numbers and percentages identified before we really had the system in place, so we'll have to look at it as this all evolves. But the March and April information looks pretty good so far. The second one is code enforcement. As you all know, typically with code enforcement, you have somebody that's mad and somebody that, well, typically they both start out mad. We either resolve the complaint or we tell them that there's not a problem. So in 2009, we had a citizen satisfaction rating of 52%, so we feel that's pretty good. It's hard to make everybody happy. This next one is, this is our live release rate, the 75%. One of the things here is that we work, the shelter works really hard with our community You may remember back in 2009, the National ASPCA came in and designated us, I think it was called Project Orange at the time, it's changed a couple of times now, but they provided some funding to help us to try to achieve this 75% live exit rate. We have a real strong relationship with the OK Humane Society. And just recently, PetSmart has come into this, we're one of two targeted communities that they're going to do a media campaign to try to help increase our spade and neuter numbers. Really, the only way that we're ever going to reduce the number of animals that we bring through the shelter is to spade and neuter the animals that are out there so there's not additional strays. One thing that we're proposing in this budget, and I'll talk a little bit more about it later, is that currently we have a $50 fee to adopt an animal. We're proposing to change, to take 50% of that fee and consider it a donation, which will be used directly to increase our spade and neuter. The advantages here, it gives us more money to help find vendor vets and other vets in the community to help us increase our spade and neuter. And it gives the person that adopts the animal the ability to consider at least half of their fee a donation. And then Catherine feels that some people, when they adopt an animal and it can be considered a donation, may give us additional money in for our donation accounts. So we're going to see how that works. It'll take us a few months to get that underway, but we feel that that could increase our spade and neuter up probably 3,500 a year, which would be a good thing if we can get This next one's our, this is our zoning and subdivision. Typically, we try to make 80% of the time, we want an application for a new residential development once from submittal to approval by the Planning Commission in 60 days. We want that 80% of the time. The rezoning or the straight zoning cases and the PEDs that you see, we want to do that within 120 days, 80% of the time. And the numbers there currently, we're right at 80%. We're going to, we're going to increase that number and try to hit 85%. And these are the developers and, you know, these projects create jobs and we don't want to delay them any more than we have to. This next one's our building permit. We propose to complete 100% of the initial reviews on commercial within 20 days of submission. The remodels would be 15 days, 100% within 15 days. And then our inspections, we strive to get an inspection done within two days, 70% of the time. Looking at our numbers there, we're pretty close. We're just under the 100% on the commercial, 92 on the remodels. We do have an issue there with our inspections at 52%. There were a series of things that happened, but we're proposing in this budget to add a new plumbing inspector and electrical inspector that we feel like will help us meet that goal. We've made some changes in our supervision to try to increase our effectiveness in that. We also have a new system that eventually will come online this summer, we hope, that will allow an applicant to make an inspection request online. So that will save them having to call in and go through that system. It should improve our response time. I'll talk a little bit more. This is the overall operating budget. Our proposal is to increase, to add four new positions to the department. Our Administration Division, there's five, there's five people, we didn't increase it, we basically handle all the administration, payroll, those types of things. Our First Division is Animal Welfare. We have three sections, Animal Control, that I've talked about, and the officers in the field, the Animal Shelter. We, on a daily basis, we have 300, 350 animals in the shelter at a time, we can hold up to 750. It kind of varies with the, with the seasons, kind of. Veterinary Services, that's, that's a section that manages the animals when they come in. They treat the animals that, that we pick up or people drop off. One thing, but, for our Animal Control, something I didn't mention to try to improve our efficiency, we kind of looked at our complaints throughout the week, and we had been at a 10-hour, four-day-a-week shift, trying to keep as many officers in the field as we could, and we kind of looked at our numbers, and we get the majority of our complaints during the day, during the week. And so, recently, we just went to eight-hour shifts, so we have more officers in the field during the week and then fewer on the weekends where we don't get as many complaints. And that seems to have helped us, make us more efficient. I just wanted to give you some numbers.
What, what, what is that in the picture?
That's one of our staff people. Oh, that, that's an owl.
Are we sterilizing or adopting owls?
No, we get all types of animals there. What we would do with this one is, we'd call the State Wildlife Department or maybe a rescue group, but the story is, it was really cold when we picked it up, and it's kind of sitting there, so. I thought it was, I really wanted to put that picture on every slide so y'all wouldn't pay attention to anything else, but I couldn't, I couldn't quite pull that off.
Just to show the diversity of our Animal Control Department.
Well, and it really is. Bob told some stories when we were doing the prep for this, about bobcats and cattle and, and equine, and, and they get a, just an incredible variety of, of opportunities.
That's correct. And, I mean, we have to be able to respond to any call, and, and we really, I think, do a really good job of that. But, I just, some of these numbers, you know, we get over 28,000 calls a year. We run about 29,000 animals through the shelter a year. Couple of the others, we, right now, we're at about 17,000 live exits for the year. That, that's kind of a target. Something I do want to mention, and maybe you've seen it advertised, we've been involved in a, we call it midnight whiffness over the last year and a half. We've done three of those events, and actually, the first one was in the summer of 2010, we adopted, what is, we, we partner with six shelter groups and PetSmart. And we go to their parking lot, and we run a 48-hour event where we adopt animals. In the summer of 2010, we adopted 377 animals in a 48-hour period and set a record. And then in fall, we did the same thing, and we adopted 487, set another record. And then, spring of this year, we adopted 565 in a 48-hour period. Now, PetSmart claims that that's a world record, they don't know that anybody's ever done that before. Now, it's not all the shelter, because we have several partner groups, but, I mean, it's incredible, the, if you've ever seen it, people are lined up to come and look at the animals, so. Here's your budget. We're proposing adding one customer service rep in the budget, basically to work the counter. The shelter has 9,500 visitors a year, which is about 300 a day. And so, you know, and sometimes they'll, they'll all be there at the same time, it seems like. So, we're trying to add a position to help ease that load on the counter. Our next division's Code Enforcement. Fortunately, the pictures aren't as pretty here, but these pictures show pretty much what we do, what Code Enforcement does. You've got high grass, you've got a yard parked car, you've got a junk and debris, you've got an unsecured, possibly dilapidated house. You know, code inspection, we also do about 28 proactive areas throughout the neighborhood where we, I mean, throughout the city, where we'll drive through on a weekly basis and check properties to try to stay ahead of possible complaints. Our budget here, we're proposing to add one inspector in this budget. We had four, over 43,000 complaints last year, and like I said, it's up 18% through the first half of this year. Something that we're trying to do here that, we're going to, we're going to put our inspectors on a computer system, we're going from the existing Hanson system to a cella, which will allow them to have a computer in their car, and we'll be able to track their movements if we get something we have to respond to right away. Our supervisors in the office can respond, and we'll know where they are all the time. Something else that we try to do is, Charles meets with neighborhoods. We have a working relationship with George and Neighborhood Services, and we try to get ahead of it by meeting with neighborhood associations and telling them what we do and what they need to call about, and those types of things. The next one's Development Center. This is our permitting, construction inspections, permits, licensing, and plan review. Just some of the numbers here, we get over, we complete over 85,000 inspections a year. We review about just under 1,000 commercial, new commercial plans a year. We do about 2,600 single-family. Issuing the permits, we have 42,500 permits and 25,000 business licenses. Those all come, go through one central, we kind of call it a customer service area, where anybody that's on the phone can answer any of the questions about a permit or a, or a license, or that's what we're striving to do. We're trying to train them to do that, to make us more efficient. The budget, we're proposing to increase by two positions. I talked about that earlier, we're going to add a electrical inspector, a plumbing inspector. Basically, on our response times, right now, it takes about five days to do an inspection for plumbing and four days to do an inspection for electrical. Our mechanical and our building are at one day. So, if we can get those other two down, we'll be able to meet that, that 70% two-days goal. And I think those two budgets, those two positions will help us there. The next one is zoning and subdivision. There were no changes in this division. They process over 600 cases annually. They staff the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission jointly with the, with the Planning Department on the Planning Commission. Then, you'll see, sometimes J.J. will be here when I'm not here at council, so that, this division is responsible for those zoning applications that you see every week. And like that previous slideshow, we do a pretty good job of getting those through the system. We don't want to slow anyone down any more than we have to. Here's just the summary page of major, major budget changes. The Animal Welfare Rep is at the counter, talked about the spade and neuter, trying to add, give us the ability to do more spade and neuter. The electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, and then the adding the environmental code inspector. And our budget summary there is, it's an increase of four positions. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Your Honor, just to go back, on the four positions, Bob, that you're showing additional, are any of those adding positions that previously had been in your department and been eliminated due to budget cuts in earlier years?
The code inspector is the Animal Welfare, well, we did some mid-year cuts last year. I think the customer services are replacement at the Animal Shelter, and the code officer in the field's a replacement.
Well, by and large, we're just getting back to where we were in previous years.
Trying to, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, David?
Bob, as far as the statistics on inspection, how do we compare to, say, the surrounding communities as far as the number of days it takes for the inspections to take place?
Depends who you talk to. Bob and I had an opportunity yesterday at lunch to meet with a developer, a, a small business owner, and a contractor that was saying, you know, that in one of the other communities, you can get a commercial inspection in two hours, and was suggesting that was a standard we need to meet. I'm not sure that was either true nor reasonable, but, but that is the perception that's out there in, in some areas, but, but all joking aside, I'll let Bob, I, I.
It's really hard to compare us with our surrounding communities because of the volume that we do.
Right.
You saw the 85,000 inspections. And like Jim said, I'm going to look into this claim for these other communities, because it, it seems like that may be a little exaggerated. But I can get back with you if you want to see that.
Yeah, please, because I do think often it is a perception and, and anything we could do to help overcome that. One other point and then question, I do commend the Animal Welfare Division working towards the 75% live exit and eventually, someday, becoming, reaching the category of a no-kill type shelter. I, I hope we can achieve that. Anything that we can, as a council, consider in the way of statutes or ordinance that would help in that regards, and, for example, I don't know if this would be helpful or not, or if we could even do this, but at times, I see people pull up into parking lots of, of shopping centers with a box full of puppies, just trying to sell them for $5 or something. And while it tugs at a lot of people's hearts, and they may make a spur-of-the-moment decision to buy that puppy, I, I'm concerned that within a week or two after they get the puppy home, they kind of lose interest in it, and it just creates problems. So, anything that we, as a council, could do to assist you in, in helping to achieve that no-kill category, I, we certainly, I would certainly welcome any thoughts or ideas. Really want to look into that. Thank you.
The council's been really supportive in that, and it's, it's going to take time, but, you know, our, our staff, we're working really hard to get there, and, you know, we'll look at things and bring them to, to Jim if there's things we think can help us in the future. I appreciate that.
Skip, then Pat?
Yes. Bob, how many code enforcement inspectors do you have presently?
We have 24 in the field, and then we have four part-time inspectors that primarily pick up the trash litter signs that you see on, on the corner.
Of course, be this size, based on the, the number of citations and inquiries that you've responded to, approximately, how many would you recommend that you need to have a more efficient code enforcement operation for the City of Oklahoma City?
Well, it's, it's hard to do because we have such, you know, so many square miles. One thing we have identified is our proactive program has worked very well, where you can get an inspector in a targeted neighborhood. You know, without sitting down and looking at numbers, I, I couldn't really tell you what a, you know, I don't want to guess, but, I mean, any additional inspector would help us, and we'd have plenty of work for them.
So, in your proposed budget, is there a request for any additional code enforcement inspectors?
Just one.
Just one?
That's correct.
Is it any reason why you didn't ask for three?
He, he did, sir.
Well, I'm charged with trying to be reasonable, and so, I will, we have to look at the department and try to, you know, we, we really need the inspectors in, in Development Center, I mean, because of that 52%, and, I mean, that's something that we don't want to delay construction, because they generate jobs and, and revenue. But, yes, a code, you know, additional code enforcement would help, and you know, from some of the things in your ward that.
Right. And the problem I, I, I know exists is that even with the proactive assignment, you know, when you put one or two inspectors in one particular area for proactive enforcement, you're taking away from another part of the city, is in reference to having the adequate amount of, of inspectors to enforce the issues in, in that area. Do your department, do y'all apply for any type of federal funds, for any grants to?
No, not in that area. We do currently have a weed and seed inspector that is funded through that program from the Police Department that works in a target in the weed and seed area, but other than that, we haven't really looked at that, or not since I've been here for two years.
Are there programs that you're aware of that we could inquire or, or apply for?
We can look at that. I, you know, I'm not, I'm not familiar.
I'm not aware of any specific grants in that area, but we could certainly go see what, what's available out there. Obviously, Community Development Block grants, those type of things could be used in those areas, but we've generally committed those other areas.
Thank you, Bob.
Pat, then Meg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question, have we ever licensed animals in Oklahoma City, dogs and cats?
Not for, I don't know if ever, but if it has been, it's been for a lo, a long, long time ago.
Would that be one way to get to the sale of pups from a box in a shopping center parking lot, as David suggested? If we had a requirement that you couldn't sell an unlicensed animal, a dog or cat?
It, it would still be an enforcement issue. Currently, with, with dogs and cats that are, you know, offered on the side of the street, the Police Department will work those as an outdoors, basically, it's an outdoor seller without a license, and so, the Police Department has been working those, because, I guess it was last summer, up along Memorial Road, by some of the shopping centers, there was just seemed like to be a lot of them.
Would it be a way to help in, in control rabies? Do we have a problem with rabid animals that, that maybe a licensing that required proof of vaccination might help?
It just seems like the issue of licensing is just so large. We've looked at it before, but there's so many dog, I mean, there's, you know, it'd be a million, you know what I mean?
We actually estimated 400,000 animals.
400,000, that's a lot of license, yeah.
Be, be a million next month, but there's 400,000 today.
Now, if we have a good span, Mr. President.
Mr. Jordan believes that we licensed dogs, not never cats, but dogs sometime in, in the 70s, and got rid of that a couple of years ago. And then I think there was some discussion about it again in the last 10, 12 years about whether that would be a good thing to do or not, but it never.
Well, we're always looking for revenue streams to try and increase what we're doing. And so, you know, licensing of animals would increase the revenue stream, except that it might decrease people's ability to get involved and have a pet, if you start charging. And then you got the increased administration and all sorts of issues, so it's, it's, I don't, it's, it's, yes, I, I don't know the answer either, I just know we, we've visited it before and determined it, it didn't seem like it was in our best interest when you look at it from a big-picture perspective.
We used to buy licensed bicycles, too. We, you want to revisit that one?
That I didn't know.
Yeah. When I first went on the fire department, they sold bicycle licenses at the other fire station.
All right. Any other questions for Bob? Meg?
Mine was just really a quick comment, I just want to thank your staff, really. This is a, it's a tough area of enforcement, and Charles particularly, you guys spend so much time working through problems and coming to solutions, and the, the process is, seems like it works really well, and I'm very appreciative of everything you do.
Appreciate that. We try real hard to, you know, solve problems as opposed to write citations, and we work with citizens every day to try to solve their problems.
All right, any other comments or questions for Bob? All right, Jim?
Next, next up is the Parks Department, Wendell Wilson Hunter, our Parks Director's
Good morning, Mayor Council. Thank you for allowing me to present a snapshot of the budget proposal for the Parks and Recreation Department this morning. I want to thank Ms. Tipton for helping. I want to thank Ms. Tipton for helping us with the computer, and Larry Ogle, the Assistant Director of the Parks Department, and Wes Gray, our Business Manager, for helping us prepare this budget. It is one of the most monumental tasks that each department has to do each year, something we take very seriously. Our mission is to provide parks, recreational and cultural services to Oklahoma City residents and visitors so they can enjoy a enhanced quality of life. So that guides us every day. I want to quickly go through the divisions or lines of business of the Parks and Recreation Department. The Administration Division is where we house our landscape architects, our central business office, and the staffing necessary for the nine boards and commissions that we provide staff assistance to. All of our marketing and public information efforts come from the Administration Division. We provide a lot of assistance to neighborhoods through our landscape architecture section and try our best to communicate our programs from the Administration Division to the general public. Botanical Gardens Division includes the Mary Botanical Gardens and its Crystal Bridge Tropical Conservatory, as well as the Will Rogers Gardens and its Ed Lichen Conservatory. The Ed Lichen Conservatory, as has been the Crystal Bridge at Mary Botanical Gardens, is going under a massive renovation. We're very pleased that that's happening because that facility had become very much dilapidated, and bond-issue funds are saving that as we speak. The Will Rogers Garden Exhibition Center at Will Rogers Park serves and has for many years as the headquarters for the garden clubs activities, and offer a lot of free landscape classes to citizens at that facility. As I mentioned, the Ed Lichen Conservatory, our early 1900s facility, is being renovated, and it'll soon be open to the public, and will have something that is quite unusual, do already have something that's quite unusual for a city our size, having two botanical gardens is a wonderful thing to have. The Civic Center Music Hall Division provides ticket sales, performances, and non-performance rentals at both the Civic Center Music Hall, as well as the Rose State Performing Arts As you all know, we have beautiful facilities to offer our citizens performing arts in, and we're very pleased about that. The Grounds Management Division, or Line of Business, does all of the maintenance of parks and outdoor athletic facilities in the park system, medians and green spaces, the lake reservation recreation areas, portions of the Bricktown Canal, as well as the Oklahoma River. We have 152 parks that this division maintains. It's a very big job, and we think they are doing it quite well now. The Recreation Division, the division obviously that has the most public contact in the Parks and Recreation Department, operates our aquatic facilities, two family aquatic centers and other pools, one indoor pool, by the way, 11 recreation centers, two senior centers, two large tennis facilities, one at Early Wine in South Oklahoma City, and one at Will Rogers in North Oklahoma City, over 110 athletic fields. A lot of young people play athletics on our fields around town, two standalone gymnasiums. Most of our rec centers have a smaller gymnasium along with them as well. I'll mention again that the Recreation Division helps us with the recreation at all the lake reservation areas, as well as Martin Nature Park. I don't want a year to go by without taking the opportunity to tell you about some of the successes that we've had this past year, most of which have been bond-issue driven. Schilling Recreation Center in southeast Oklahoma City has been totally renovated and expanded. It has the emphasis in mind that we are heading toward providing more regional services as best we can at our recreation centers. We have a very much of a neighborhood model for our recreation centers, where we can, we want to expand our services in those recreation centers more reasonably. Historic Eggland Stadium in Wheeler Park has been renovated. It's once again beautiful and ready for play. It's a facility that has needed work for a number of years, and now looks great. We'll be, for the first time, opening a new slide at Early Wine Family Aquatic Center this summer. It's a very large feature, and we expect to have an increase in attendance at Early Wine Park, at the Family Aquatic Center, our most successful pool by a long shot. We have completed skate plazas at South Lakes Park in South Oklahoma City and Route 66 Park in West Oklahoma City. They are much the same, although of a different level of requirement of expertise than the skate park that we have in Wiley Post Park. They're being well-used. We've also completed the Accessible Nature Trail and Parking Project at Bluff Creek Park in northwest Oklahoma City. It is an unusual situation because all citizens can access the forest on a paved trail, so it's very accessible for all of us. It's a beautiful facility, and if you haven't seen it, I'd invite you to please go see it. We've completed our first universal playground on the east side of Lake Kefner, the Oklahoma Lions Children's Park, with a great deal of help from the Lions Club, who raised some $400,000 to help us build that beautiful facility. This was partially funded with bond funds, but primarily with the donations of the Lions Club. When we say "universal playground," we're speaking about the ability of children and adults to use the playground well beyond just access. All of our playgrounds that we're building are ADA-accessible. This one is very much usable by a child or an adult, perhaps the grandpa of a child who is there, very much accessible and usable by those folks, not just accessible, but usable. We hope to build more of these in the future. We expect to spend about $18 million in the upcoming year in additional bond projects. We'd like to feature a couple of projects before you today. The first is the Mary Botanical Gardens and its recent renovation. A bit of history's probably in order, so I'll do that. In 1964, I.M. Hay was commissioned to create a revitalization plan for downtown Oklahoma City, and that's where the kernel of the idea for the Mary Botanical Gardens came from. And in 1975, the city purchased the site for the Mary Botanical Gardens. The Gardens Authority, that is the Mary Gardens Authority, was created to develop the 17-acre site that year, and in '77, the construction began. In '81, the Mary Gardens Foundation was formed to raise private funds for the construction of the Crystal Bridge Tropical Conservatory. In '83, some $6 million that they raised was spent on the Crystal Bridge. In '87, the Parks and Recreation Department took over the operation of the garden, and in '88, the Crystal Bridge opened its doors. But after a long period of use and exposure to the elements and serving more than 2 million people in the park, the Crystal Bridge and some of the other facilities in the park were getting rough on the edges. As you can see, the Crystal Bridge, prior to the renovation that I hope you've all seen now, was no longer crystal. It was not attractive, but that's all been corrected. The aging Crystal Bridge's exterior has had all of its 3,000 windows replaced. The problems on the lakes and slopes are repaired. The outdated pedestrian walkway has been redesigned and a new walkway implemented, and the lack of programming space that we've always suffered from at the Mary Gardens has been corrected. It is a great place now for programs. One of the, one of the areas, of course, that will be great for programming is the bandshell you see before you. A lot of attention was given to lighting at the facilities of the Mary Gardens, so it'll be a very attractive place both day and night. Parks professionals are keenly aware of the fact that water interests people in gardens and parks, and there are plenty of water features in the Mary Botanical Gardens to cause people to have a pleasant visit to that garden. The next featured project we'd like to mention is the Eisenhower Plaza at Stars and Stripes Park. Stars and Stripes Park and that point is perhaps the most beautiful point on Lake Kefner. The Eisenhower Plaza, however, the flag plaza, had deteriorated tremendously and was beginning to crumble, and it was no longer something we were proud to represent. But that's no longer the case. It's all been repaired through a bond project. It's fully ADA-accessible now. There's a new sea wall featuring fully accessible telescopes that one can use to look out over the lake. There's a new flag pole with proper lighting. New architectural walls house the plaques that have the sayings and quotations of the general. New bicycle racks are present, new benches, and beautiful new plantings. We never forget our partners because without them, we wouldn't be functioning nearly as well as we are now. We have more than 50 partners in the community that help us in a number of ways, including donations, or help with the services that we provide, or help with value-adding to the services that we provide. So we want to thank them all, but there are four that we want to particularly thank this year. Those include the Oklahoma Community Foundation for the grant that they have given us for the Margaret Annis Boys Arboretum in Will Rogers Park. For the first time, we'll have a hard-surfaced trail out through the arboretum for all of us to be able to access that beautiful facility. It's been there for a long time. A lot of people have enjoyed it, but a lot of people haven't been able to access it. Soon, everyone will be able to. I've already said thanks. I'll say thanks a second time to the Downtown Lions Club for the great work they did and gave donations to build our first universal playground on the east side of Lake Kefner, and the First He organization for building a $1.5 million teaching facility at Douglas Park. We all know, whether we're golfers or not, that the future of golf is based on the young people of Oklahoma City beginning golf when they're children, and the First He organization will do just that, as well as a great deal of character building while they're at it. Chesapeake needs thanking again for, once again, helping us operate the Macklenburg Swimming Pool. You'll soon be seeing a donation come forward for the second year running to allow us to continue the operation of that swimming pool. So thank you again, Chesapeake. I'd like to thank an internal partner this year as well. Oklahoma City Police Department is now operating the Hathaway Center in south Oklahoma City. It's a center that we did not have the money in last year's budget, or could not include in last year's budget to operate. In discussing this with the police department, we're very pleased that they were able to begin operating a youth program in that facility, and we're here to help anytime we can. Volunteers are our lifeblood. Seniors, youth, and corporate volunteers help us every day in our park system. They not only help us get work done, but they form a very valuable constituency for the Parks Department as well. I'd like to quickly tell you a bit about our leading-for results process in the Parks and Recreation Department. One of the things that we're keenly aware of is that we have changing demographics in Oklahoma City and changing growth patterns, and we know that we have to modify our park system to meet those new needs, and we pay close attention to that and measure it as best we can. We also know that as we begin to improve the park system, that the public expectations will increase, and we've got to find a way to maintain those facilities as we build them, or the satisfaction of our new buildings and projects will go down. We watch that well, as well. We're also keenly aware that our current energy and labor-intensive method of delivering service has to be closely monitored, and we have to continue to find efficiencies that will lessen our investment in both those areas. We also know that unless we continue to properly fund these new and upgraded facilities, that we will not continue to be serving the citizens as they want to be served with their new facilities. So we watch very closely to make sure that citizens continue to see well-maintained areas in the park system. We absolutely know that when we build a new facility, that if we don't maintain it to the public's expectation, they will not feel good about it, so neither will we. So with that, we'll quickly go through some of the major changes in the budget. This budget adds the operating cost for covering the Mary Botanical Gardens expenses, including three positions, the utilities, contracts, and services and supplies needed to maintain that new garden, for a total of $1,164,000. It adds budget to cover operating costs for the three swimming pools that will be opening that were not budgeted, including Menace Lakeview in northeast Oklahoma City, Macklenburg in north Oklahoma City, as well as Woodson in south Oklahoma City, will be operating. No new positions associated with that. We currently have one full-time position for the entire aquatic system. That concerns me because the span of control and the spread of our system across the community, we feel, requires a second position, full-time position. And we now have budgeted an aquatics program coordinator position to help manage that aquatic system. There's both a fun element and a safety element to swimming, and we pay the most attention to that second element, and we'll be able to do a better job of that with this new position. We've also added an administrative position that was lost in the budget last year in the Recreation Division, which serves to help oversee the recreational programs in the division, serves as the office manager, and also will serve as the person to handle the financial aspects of the implementation of the geo-bond issues. We've also added an engineering assistant, too, to the Administration Division. That position will allow us to complete our bond-issue projects and get them on the street more quickly. We've increased the subsidy for the Stewart Golf Course to cover the operational costs associated with the full-time professional that was hired recently, as well as the reopening of the onsite restaurant, for a total of $145,000. We have moved $212,000 from the MAPS Operations Supply Budget to the General Fund to begin the process of moving our dependence away from that MAPS fund to the General Fund slowly but surely. Those funds are used to maintain, provide maintenance on the canal, as well as the river. You see before you the department's budget, $27,753,000 with a complement of 193 positions. This is probably a good time to tell you that we take the support of the council and the public very seriously, and we remember when the citizens of Oklahoma City had lesser expectations of us. We're glad that they have greater expectations of us now, and we very much want to come through. I want to mention to you that this budget has also been reviewed by the Board of Park Commissioners, and they have approved it unanimously. Now, I've talked a lot about process and how we get there, but I want to tell you what we're going to do with the money. I want to talk about the product of it. The product includes about 344,000 participations at our recreation centers. That's, it's primarily children. That's a lot of visits to recreation centers. About 121,000 attendances at our pools and family aquatic centers. An estimated 278,000 spray ground attendances at our 16 spray grounds. This is old news to you, ladies and gentlemen, but those spray grounds have been very successful and are a very good buy for the public, cost-wise in comparison with pools. We expect to serve about 57,000 play-in-the-park participations. That is our staffed playground program in the summer. A lot of kids. We expect to serve about 15,000 individuals in-house, primarily youth, during our athletic programs. Let me mention also that we have a lot of agreements, primarily with service clubs around town, where thousands of additional children are served. That model has worked very well for us. We sell about 14,000 fishing permits for individuals to fish in the city's large lakes and park ponds. We should serve around 335,000 Civic Center patrons this upcoming year. We expect to have about a million visitors to the Mary Botanical Garden. Now, I'll qualify that by mentioning to you that a large number of those visitors come to us during the Arts Festival, but we still count them. This is something that I couldn't have told you a few years ago, because we didn't have the facilities. the facilities to have special events, large special events, but we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of 228,000 visits to special events in our park system. That's a wonderful thing, and it's something that is the envy of a number of other park directors across the country that I speak with. This is a very impressive fact that we hope to see increase as well. Citizens surveys show that about 69% of citizens in Oklahoma City either visit a park or serve, pardon me, take participation in a park program. That's a lot of us. We think we're having a great impact, having 69% participate, so we're very pleased about that. We want to thank you for the support that you give us each year, and thank the citizens for the support that they give us. We're attempting to serve all the citizens of Oklahoma City, and we take input very respectfully from citizens who tell us what they'd like to have and try to find ways to have that program offered to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendell. Yeah, Gary, you want to get us started?
Well, just a couple of comments on things that he covered. The Will Rogers Park, with the bond money where we're reconditioning the Ed Lichen Conservatory, and with the grant from the Margaret Annis Boys Trust that helped out around the lake and the Rose Garden area and all of that. If people have not been out there lately, they need to get out and walk around that park, because it's absolutely astounding the way it's been redone and the way it looks. I believe when the conservatory is finished, they'll see another unique item. That's got a history that I didn't even, and I played in that park all the time I was growing up, but that Burnham &amp; Brown, I believe, was the brand name that came out of England.
Lord &amp; Burnham, sir.
Okay. And it's just an amazing property. So I would encourage the citizens to get out this summer and go through Will Rogers Park, because it's really been restored. Secondly, on the Mary Gardens, the Arts Council will move its Sunday Twilight Concert Series back into the park this year after the remodel. That's open free to the public, and that goes on during the summer and has a lot of participation, has had in the past, and I'm sure it will grow again. I think the plans are to have it in the bandshell this summer.
We've begun working with them on the schedule.
And as a side note, Peter DeLeese, the Director of the Arts Council, is going to ask the board this year, Arts Council Board, to increase the budget. He'd like to discuss with Parks and Mary Gardens Foundation, having the Arts Council provide free lunchtime performance, arts performance in the bandshell all summer long, every day, which would put something going on down there every day at lunchtime in some kind of a performing arts venue, and the Arts Council would fund that. It wouldn't cost the city anything, and it would be open free to the public. So there's a lot of discussion about, a lot of good things going on in the parks, and I think it'll just continue to grow, and I applaud your efforts.
One of the things that was clearly a point of the renovation was to make facilities available for such activities as you described there, ongoing activities.
Other questions for Wendell? Pat, then Skip.
Wendell, your budget, $27,700,000.
Yes, sir.
How's that compare to last year?
It's somewhat more. I'll try to find that figure.
I could find, I'm sure, in here by being lazy on.
It is more, sir.
The second question is related, the 193 positions that you show, how does that compare to the positions you have right now?
It's eight more positions.
Okay, thank you. And you do a great job, so I'm not, I think the money well-spent to increase budget here.
Thank you, sir.
Craig, you have the budget numbers?
The budget's about 13% higher than what it was last year, and a portion of that is on the capital side. On the operating side, it's about 9% higher than what it was. Dennis Curry.
Thank you, Craig.
Skip.
Yes. Wendell, I would like to also thank the Lions Club for their fantastic contributions and the partnership that they created in reference to the Universal Park. With that as a model, do you see, under your program, without or with, you know, outside partnerships, of this becoming more of the way our playgrounds will be created with our city parks?
Yes, I do. As a matter of fact, we're already talking with the club about an additional playground. It's very early in the discussions, but we are beginning discussions with them, but yes, anytime we can do a playground or a facility like that with a partner, a community partner, it's great, because we get so much buy-in from the general public. It's much preferable to doing it without the partner.
In the event that you don't have partners, you know, just under your budget, is this the way we will go forth in reference to creating playgrounds or redoing our playgrounds at some of our parks?
We're beginning to install elements of the Universal Playground style in all of our playgrounds, and one of those elements is the poured-in-place rubber surfaces that we're now installing at our playgrounds, which was installed at this Universal Playground. That gives much greater accessibility than the park surfaces, and we're using those at high-impact areas on our new playgrounds, yes.
But the question is, on the funding sources of that, that generally funding sources for playground improvements come from the general obligation?
Oh, absolutely. I misunderstood. Yes. All of the playgrounds we're building come from the bond funds. Yes, sir.
Okay. What I wanted to point out is that I've received a lot of calls from people who have children who have physical disabilities, and that they would like to, in the areas where they live, participate, you know, in some of the activities at the park, but some of them are very limited because of their disabilities. And so with this being a model, which I think is a fantastic, you know, model of playground for parks, I just would like to see the city use this as a go-forth model to create new, you know, playground activities for children.
I agree with you, sir. The playground industry currently is doing some really new and inventive things, and that's one of them. There's clearly a move to have all the children of the community play at a single playground. The children, based on their abilities, play at that same playground, and that's our philosophy as well. We're trying to mix the kids together.
Okay. And just for a point of clarification, I don't know if I misunderstood, but when you were given the history of the Mary Botanical Gardens, did I understand that you said that the foundation raised $6 million?
They did, yes, sir. Toward the building of the Crystal Bridge.
Right, okay. And that foundation is still in existence, is that correct?
It is, yes, sir.
What has been the contributing funds up to this point in reference to the foundation on a yearly basis?
Yes, sir. I can't give you the figure, but I can tell you some of the other things that they've done for us. They, to a large extent, helped us collect the plant collection inside the Crystal Bridge, and they also have made a major contribution toward the renovation of the water stage seating area and the installation of a very expensive elevator in recent years.
Improvements down to the McGee Center, too, didn't they not?
Yes, they did help with the McGee Center as well. Thank you.
So it's been more of a project-by-project basis, Mr. Kelly, subsequent to then? They've identified a project that they wanted to raise funds for and did that on a project-by-project basis?
My last. Other questions? Yes, Skip.
My last question. I love parks. When you look at the list of the various, the different number of organizations that have participated with contributions to our Parks Department, it's kind of interesting that each one of these organizations, if they have such passion for the growth and the development of our Parks Department, of our parks for children and for adults, do you feel like that we could, or there could be a creation for a Parks Foundation for the overall Parks and Recreational support in the city of Oklahoma City as opposed to, I think there was probably like 20 different organizations that was listed here? Is it possible that you could, that some organization that's created could bring all these corporations and businesses and nonprofit organizations together and create a Parks Foundation?
Mr. Kelly, that has been discussed in some circles. Primarily, the Community Foundation has had some discussions regarding that, and I believe the Community Foundation is in the process of doing a, some type of report or study to take a look at that. I don't believe it's been completed or released as of yet, but I do know that they have had some discussions regarding that, and I think there's something probably forthcoming on that.
And we'll be following up with them as that study is completed.
All right. Meg, and then Larry.
And really, my honest, just a comment to follow up on Councilman Kelly's initial conversation. I've had a number of discussions with my Parks Commissioner, Janet Seifelt, who is passionate about trying to use this Universal Playground model in other areas of the city. So I hope we really do take a hard look at that and make our parks a little bit more accessible.
We've had a number of individuals, parents, guardians, older brothers and sisters, call us to tell us a thank you for that, and it's very heartening. It really is.
Larry?
Couple of comments and questions, Wendell. One of the things that was not mentioned, it was a smaller scale, was at Tulsa Park. The renovation of that park, along with some partnerships coming from some private businesses that did some construction work out there, has reclaimed that park and turned it from a liability into an asset. Would you agree?
Absolutely, and it's primarily due to the citizens who, we helped where we could, but we were following them, sir. They were the leaders.
Citizens were taking the lead, and they did an excellent job. Right near there, Woodson Park, Woodson will be open again this year. I just want to make this announcement clear to all the citizens in southwest Oklahoma City, and the admission fee for swimming at Woodson Park will be...
Zero.
Zero, which is what it was last year, which was a tremendous benefit, was it not, for attracting people in that neighborhood areas to come in?
We had great attendance.
Did attendance go up?
Yes, sir.
Attendance drop.
Dramatically.
Good to know.
And that is a large, and on the other side of the coin, E.B. Jeffries Park, if anybody wants to see what a sprayground park can do for a neighborhood, come to E.B. Jeffries. That place is packed all the time. I know you cannot learn to swim there, but the kids are having a great time. Families are coming together, picnicking, just fellowshipping, and they've turned that park into a real magnet of activity, and it's a real testimony to what those sprayground parks can do.
Where is that park, Larry?
It's at 16th and Meridian, right by the fire station there, and it is packed.
There's been a real additional benefit to the spraygrounds that frankly I hadn't planned on, and that's the level of physical activity that takes place at the sprayground, all the spraygrounds, a lot of physical activity.
Yeah, if you want to see kids in motion, go to one of those. They're not, you know, dog-paddoing or swimming, but they're running like crazy and jumping and running around, so they're burning off some calories. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Anybody else for Wendell? All right, Wendell, thank you.
Thank you all very much. That completes our presentations from the Finance Committee for today. Our schedule will be as follows. Next week, we will have a regular City Council meeting. Do you introduce the budget next week, Craig? Adoption?
Yes, sir.
It'll be on for introduction on the budget, and then the following week, on June 7th, we will have another Finance Committee with more department presentations. Amongst those will be Transit, IT, and General Services, and then we will be looking and have further discussion on the budget that time and looking to adopt the budget in the following week, on June 14th.
All right. Ready to adjourn the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir.
All right. Finance Committee is adjourned. We'll move on and rejoin the council meeting or reconvene the council meeting, and we're on Item 6, which is Items from Council. Gary, you have anything for us today? Ed?
For a minute about a resolution that's coming up next week, just so it can be properly vetted, and that's a resolution to eliminate or provide smoke-free workplaces, to eliminate smoking rooms in city buildings. Yesterday, on the front cover of the USA Today, decided the study that ranked Oklahoma City dead last out of the 50 most populous metro areas. They went out of their way to point out, just under the title, that Oklahoma City lummbers in last. We have a health epidemic problem in Oklahoma City and Oklahoma that is, it's a health issue, it's a healthcare economics issue. The current epidemics are unsustainable in terms of healthcare economics. It is beyond the people who are suffering, it's an economic development issue. It is, in talking with Roy Williams at the Chamber, he indicated to me recently that the biggest obstacle he has in bringing companies to Oklahoma City is not TIF financing or Convention Center inadequacies or anything else, it is the perception that we have healthcare epidemics, and companies shudder at the thought of paying the healthcare costs that are associated with our issues. They point out in this article in Minneapolis, I was being at the top, that Oklahoma City ranks lowest because of the residents' personal health habits such as smoking. I loved seeing the mayor on MSNBC two weeks ago on obesity, but there is an avalanche of negative publicity in the national media that is hard to overcome, and some of that has to do with smoking. If you can go to the next slide. The issue beyond just smoking, there is the issue of secondhand smoke and how smoking affects the rest of, not just the smokers, but the rest of our populace, and that goes to the issue of smoking rooms. It's a myth that you can eliminate the adverse health effects of smoking, of secondhand smoke through ventilation systems. Ventilation systems remove large particles, but they don't remove the small, volatile organic compounds that are the carcinogens and that trigger asthma and cardiovascular changes in people. Secondhand smoke is responsible for 50,000 deaths a year. More than 50 of the chemicals are carcinogenic and more than 200 are toxic. There's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Even brief exposures lead to measurable cardiovascular effects, and U.S. studies have shown as much as a 40% decrease in heart attack rates after cities enacted smoke-free laws. Can you go to this? The issue is the amount of particulate matter in the air, and the EPA basically, you want to see it less than 15. When you start getting more than 250, you're into hazardous territory. You wouldn't have, you want everyone to remain, or anybody susceptible to remain indoors, and you would minimize activity outdoors. If that was a particulate matter in the environment, can you go to the next slide? So last year, the Oklahoma Tobacco Research Center looked at, this is different than smoking rooms, but they looked at restaurants in Oklahoma City, and those that have smoking rooms versus non-smoking rooms and bars. If you look at, on the left, smoke-free restaurants, that's the, 26 is the particulate matter. If you look at 70, the one next to it, that's where you've got a smoking area or a smoking room, and then a non-smoking area. So you can see that there's spillover from the non-smoking, from the smoking room into the non-smoking areas. This goes beyond what next week's resolution, but you can see that for restaurants that have smoking, and especially bars, the populace, the workers, the waitresses, the bartenders, the housekeepers the next day are all being subjected to hazardous levels of smoke. Can you go to the next slide? So that brings us back to smoking rooms, and here in City Hall, we have a smoking room downstairs, and if you walk into that room, you can feel the tangible effects of the secondhand smoke in that room, and it's toxic. We are harming not only the smokers, but those who are walking in the hallway and those in the rest of the building. The World Health Organization's strong recommendation is that the only protection is to provide 100% smoke-free air. ASHRAE looks at indoor pollution levels. At present, the only means of effectively eliminating health risks associated with indoor exposure is to ban smoking activity. 2006 Surgeon General report, separating smokers from nonsmokers, cleaning the air, and ventilating buildings cannot eliminate exposures of nonsmokers to secondhand smoke. Hong Kong University of Science and Technology, even the best-designed smoking rooms do not fully protect nonsmokers from secondhand smoke, and that some leakage of secondhand smoke is inevitable. Up to 10% of the toxins in the car- and the carcinogens that are in that room are going to come into the non-smoking areas or the hallways just from the door opening and closing. And another study, Journal of Occupational Environmental Medicine, smoke-free workplace laws eliminate the hazard of tobacco smoke and provide health protection impossible to achieve through ventilation or air cleaning. There's many, many health issues that we need to address in the city, many, some of which are outside of our control. I would suggest that we address those that are within our control, start with city employees and city workplaces, and send a signal that we are serious about our healthcare. Thank you.
Larry?
Pete?
David?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to mention that I had the pleasure of attending the International Retail Real Estate Convention yesterday, and it was very educational to me. One thing that I think Councilman Kelly would enjoy hearing, as well as myself, is that not only did we have the opportunity to meet with developers who are looking at new projects, but there's several of them that are focusing on going into chunged areas, depressed areas, that, you know, all parts of, I mean, all cities have some of those, and we in Oklahoma City and south Oklahoma City and perhaps in other parts of the city also have those that are very interested in Oklahoma City. It was a very positive day for me, a lot of meetings, and I'd like to compliment the mayor, being an accountant. I love statistics and figures, and he can share those with outside developers and retailers as well as anyone I've seen. And we just, I think the city put on just a tremendous show yesterday as well as today and tomorrow, and I'd like to thank the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce for all of their efforts, and especially for setting up meetings that I believe will have a positive impact on south Oklahoma City and other parts of the city, as well as putting together meetings that will help central and downtown Oklahoma City. So I thought it was a great meeting, and the city continues to demonstrate how attractive it is to outside businesses and developers, especially in the area of retail right now. So, thank you.
Thanks, David. Meg, Skip?
Yes, I would like to thank the Sisters of Mercy. Last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to appear on behalf of the mayor for their health vacation program in which they had matched their 1 million jumping jacks in reference to the health of citizens in the workplace. And I expressed to them that the mayor has a very serious agenda as it relates to health in Oklahoma City, and of course, to echo the sentiments of Councilman Shadid in reference to smoking. This was a good example of how citizens and employers and employees can participate in the exercise program of their bodies to increase their overall health and the overall health of the citizens of Oklahoma City. And also, I know you're going to get tired of me, because I'm going to mention it almost every time I'm on this council. Edwards Elementary School had a very fantastic carnival, spring carnival on Saturday. They were blessed without the rain, and of course, the flood in the school had been cleaned up, but they, between the PTA program, the teachers, and all the citizens in the community, it was approximately 300 people that came through the carnival, and they had great support from various vendors, and the children were just absolutely delighted with the activities there. So again, congratulations to Ms. Rhonda Hamilton and all the staff at Edwards Elementary School and their PTA program.
Pat?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for the city manager, and that is, last year, Jim, in reaction to the budget problems that we had, you implemented a no-travel policy?
Yes, sir.
My understanding that you're going to rescind that restriction and allow city employees to travel to meetings is appropriate?
That's my, I sent a memo to council earlier this week, and it came that was my plan to do so, yes.
Okay. In, it's my recollection the city council adopted a resolution that essentially mirrored your policy?
That's correct.
And it seemed like it would be appropriate if you changed your policy that we change it here again, city's general policy on travel, and so whatever steps it would take to do that, I think it would be appropriate.
I'd be happy to put a resolution on for council to consider rescinding that policy.
Okay, thank you.
City manager reports.
Nothing to date, Your Honor.
Okay. Citizens to be heard. Looks like we have three people that have signed up. Morning, Jeff. Is this Angela with you?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Jeff and Angela Gregory, 4325 Northwest Fourth, Suite B, Oklahoma City. First, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the council for putting Oklahoma on the national map. It's done nothing but grow our construction business and help us in bringing new people to Oklahoma City. I think the, you guys have put us in the national media. It's just a great thing that you've got, you've done. One of the programs that I guess you guys have voted on, and we're going to go with some assumptions here, because we don't know the whole logistics of it, but the NSP program, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, the south side, the northeast side, those are big parts of that program. There were funds that were allocated through the Department of Commerce to the city of Oklahoma City. They in turn hired a company called NHS, Neighborhood Services, which in turn, we became a part of that program. We did all the needed things that were to be a part of that program, became licensed with the EPA and the DEQ in lead abatement techniques, and were part of a bidding process. We were awarded a certain number of houses, and in that determination, we made a budget to put money towards certain things. That program has been nothing but a failure, sir. The service provider that is providing that thing has no set rules. They're not on time with money. They've basically crippled our small construction company. We've been asking for over 60 days to have a house that was awarded to us. They keep on telling us they don't have the funding. Now, I find that kind of strange, after watching all these funding projects come up before y'all, that last year, an amount of money was appropriated to the city to give to NHS to buy these houses. We bid on these houses, and now they're telling us the funding is not available. They basically put us over a barrel. We would ask that the council would do an immediate investigation into the funds that were distributed to NHS. The other thing that NHS has done is the contracts are so vague. The rules change on a daily basis. The NHS had told us from the beginning that the contractors were only allowed to perform two houses at a time. When we approached them the other day, and I asked them if there was any other contractors out there with more than two houses, they wouldn't even answer my question. I know for a fact there's a contractor out there that has more than two houses. Why are we being held to a different set of rules, a small minority-owned company, if there's not rules across the board? I just don't think you people would allow this to be going on if you knew what funding issues were. I think if you check with other contractors involved with this program, I know for a fact Habitat Humanities dropped out. I mean, this is a debacle. It's totally, there's no chain of command here.
All right.
And we would like to have you guys see if you can get any answer for us, and then if we can come back to the next meeting, because if you look at the things that you guys are signing off checks for, it's just inappropriate, sir. Funds are totally being misused.
Jim, you want to look into that and distribute that to council, and we'll get back to you as well?
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that. It's first I've heard of it is this morning. Russell, I think maybe has a couple of follow-up comments.
I believe the citizens today have spoken to Star before Matt Gabelson, who manages the NSP program, and we might differ an opinion on some of the assertions made today.
But we'll be happy to meet with the citizens and get the facts.
And I would like to say, sir, that Mr. Gabelson's been the only one, I'm not saying him over there, he's been the only one that's answered any questions and been transparent. I think, and I won't speak for him, but the frustrations of the service provider that the contract is with. Mr. Gabelson's been the only one, and we've been to him, and we actually went to him before we came to you and told him while he was on vacation, we'd wait for him to come back. Mr. Gabelson's been totally upfront. I think you need to commend him, but having his hands tied for certain criteria that they're already in a contract with, I'm not going to speak for him, but I don't think he agrees with the things that are going on either.
All right. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kobe Livingston? Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Kobe Livingston. I live at 3228 Northwest 62nd Street in I also have Bob Kemper here from Oklahoma City, and we are representing the Alliance for Public Transportation. Along with us, we have a group of people in the audience. If they would wave their hands, you'll know how many are here from that group that support improved transit systems within the metro area of Oklahoma City. The Alliance for Public Transportation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit solely dedicated to the improvement of transit systems and walkability within Oklahoma City. The APT, or Alliance for Public Transportation, is all about improving both rubber tire transit as well as rail transit and sidewalks. We come before you this morning to request a conversation about the budget and allocations for public transit. Compared to other cities, compared to peer communities, we have very little transit systems here that are suitable. We have a request that, we'll only take a few more minutes, and I want to review five central points. Number one, we certainly appreciate the support of the city council. We wouldn't have gotten what we have already without your support. We ask that you consider restoring the budget cuts from last year, and if at all possible, to focus on the most worst bus stops within the metro area. We urge you to continue the funding of public transit in the communities surrounding Oklahoma City, and we're planning on asking Midwest City, Edmund, Norman, to contribute around $15,000 for improving their sidewalks and transit system, and we would like you to consider budgeting $75,000 for improving bus stops, sidewalks, rail and bus transportation. Bob?
Mr. Mayor, city manager and counselors, Bob Kemper, 2604 North Detmer, Oklahoma City. APT wants to urge and request that you support the fair share of funding for a commuter rail study called for in the COPTA Metro Transit 2005 Fixed Guideway Study. We strongly believe that this will be a gateway to eventual federal construction funding. The one-time local share is 20 percent, totaling $250,000 for the six central Oklahoma City communities of Norman, Moore, Midwest City, Dell City, Edmund, and Oklahoma City. 80 percent of approximately 1.25 million needed for the study is from federal funds already approved, but each city needs every other city, and cooperation or progress will halt.
Mr. Kemper, I was on
Yes, sir.
a conference call, I think last week or the week before, with the city managers of all those other cities, and I think we all committed to doing our local share to fund that, and I know we put that in our budget to participate on that 20 percent.
Thank you very much.
I believe that there is no one that is not going in that direction at this point in time amongst the other suburban entities.
I appreciate that cooperation very much. There's just one other point that I would like to make. In 2010, there was a House Bill, number 2846, that was passed that would create a regional transportation authority, and this transportation authority would solve a lot of inter-jurisdictional problems that we might have between various communities. It just requires, under this statute, that any combination of co-terminous cities, towns, and counties can come together by a resolution of their governing bodies to create a regional transportation authority. But nevertheless, I am glad to hear that, Mr. Couch. That's really good news. I was not aware of that, and I thank you very much. And if you have any additional questions, I would be glad to answer them for you. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? All right. Council ready to adjourn? We are adjourned.